The format is going to be, candidates were asked to prepare opening statements of approximately two minutes in length. We will call time, or we'll show a time stop sign. Why don't you show the signs, Connor? Green for 20 seconds, 10 for 10 seconds, and an orange sign with a, orange paper with a stop sign on it. Couldn't find the red sheet in my stack of construction paper, but I thought the orange was fine because the jurisdiction that I moved here from many decades ago had orange warning lights and you actually got tickets if you were more than half a car length into them when they went on. So, a lot of people screeched the brakes to stop at the orange lights. And for the opening statements, we will be generous about letting you finish the paragraph that you're on as long as it's not too long a paragraph. After that, you can finish the sentence that you're on, but if you cause to, if you insert a semicolon or even a fairly substantial comma, you will find yourself interrupted once you pass the limit. Following the opening statements, the candidates were handed, given two questions ahead of time which they were asked to prepare, and those will also be two-minute sessions. You don't have to take up all the time, but that's what's being allowed. In the meantime, those who receive pieces of paper, or those who have their own paper, or if you'd like a card or a half-sheet, please raise your hand. Linda has some more available. Linda, turn out, see if we have any customers for these. There'll be another in the back. There'll be another, we'll collect these at, oh, Linda, two more back there, three more, I think. We'll collect these preliminarily after the first of the prepared questions. If you're still writing, we'll get them again at the end of the second round. And the first time we go around to collect, if you suddenly decided that there is something that you're burning to ask, there'd be a chance to be handed a sheet. And again, if you have something to write on that you just want to improvise, that's absolutely fine. So, I'm going to just quickly introduce the candidates by name. Please either bow, smile, wave, throw something. Oh, no, you don't want to throw anything. That was for the council forum. This is school committee. We don't want to give, give bad examples for the students. So, from my right, Manika, counselor, Manika, school committee member, Manika Bowman, former school committee member Fran Cronin, David Weinstein, school committee member Patty Nolan, school committee member Emily Dexter, Jake Crutchfield, Lawrence Kimbrough, Peter Mikros, and Alechi Kadetti. School committee member Kathleen Kelly had initially indicated that she would be here. She emailed me two days ago saying that she couldn't, so I'm going to assume that her absence was due to a personal conflict rather than a planned candidate event. And school committee member Fred Fantini, about three weeks ago told me he had conflict, but he was going to try to sort it out. Have not heard since, so I'm going to assume he didn't. So, we will move on to the opening statements, the seating order, and the speaking order was determined by a random draw, except for the couple of you who got demerits for being late and missing the draw, and we put you where there were vacancies. So, Manika, you're on.
Good evening, and thank you for taking out time to come and be a part of this civic engagement process. My name is school committee member, Manika Bowman, and I am running for reelection. The last time I was before you, I told you that I was capable, I was competent, and I was qualified to lead. I'm happy to report that nothing has changed in the past two years. But one thing I did add to that, I get things done. And in my first term, I'm very proud of a couple of accomplishments. First, I expanded feminine hygiene access to all schools in the Cambridge Public Schools District, which was an equity issue because our students would have to go to a, well, get a hall pass, then go to the guidance counselor, and then go take care of themselves. It infringed on learning time, and we're a progressive city, and we need to allow our young students to be able to take care of themselves. The second thing I did was implement a, or led, rather, a no-suspension policy for vulnerable K through second graders, and led the district-wide planning effort in the district. This is only the beginning of the work that I've started in the Cambridge Public Schools, and I would love to continue the work that I've started, because I understand that in order to create change, you have to understand the institution in which you function in, and the role of being a school committee member. I am proud to have learned those lessons in my first term, and would like to continue doing the work of serving the people of Cambridge. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Manika. Fran?
Thank you, Ward Six, for hosting this event tonight. Thank you to the library for also making this room available, and a special shout-out to CCTV for live-streaming this on Facebook tonight. And I want to thank all of you for allowing me to share a little bit about who I am and why I'm running for Cambridge School Committee. So, just to know a little bit about me, 20 years I moved here, ago, I moved here as a widow with my very small children. My son was eight months, my daughter was three and a half, and I knew no one. I came here because I lost my husband, and by living here and having my children start school, that became my first community. And so, I really have a very strong passion for understanding what communicate, about what community is in our schools. And while I had the benefit of lots of support from my family, my in-laws are here tonight, they lived here, they do live here, the benefit of friends, my education, and being who I am, a lot of our families are not as fortunate. And so, while we celebrate diversity in our city, we also have to celebrate the diversity that is in our schools. And to put this in context, I want to share with you a couple of interesting statistics. Half of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. One-third of our students, English is not their home language. One out of every five students in our district is a special needs student. 1,100 of our students live in public housing, and every Friday, 500 students of our public school students go home with a backpack full of nutritional food that their family can't provide, and 350 families get, participate in our food pantries. And because we know the disparity, we know the diversity in our schools, we don't need more data, we need action, and that's why I like to bring my advocacy, my experience to the school committee to really make sure we bring best practices to make all students can graduate successfully from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. David?
Thank you, Leslie, and the entire Ward Six Democratic Committee for organizing this forum, and to Cambridge Community Television for broadcasting it. I'm really looking forward to the conversation. I ask for and need your number-one vote because we need someone on the school committee who is in the thick of it as a Cambridge Public Schools parent, has on-the-ground classroom experience, and knows how to build consensus and get things done. Cambridge has been my home for 16 years, and my kids are in the Cambridge Public Schools in kindergarten and fifth grade. I'm one of the few candidates with young children in or about to enter the schools, and as it happens, no one now on the committee has a child currently in our schools. I was a full-time classroom teacher in public schools for five years, teaching both art and English, and did a master's in education at the Harvard Grad School of Education focused on school reform and teacher leadership. I know what it means to face a classroom full of children, actually several classrooms full of children each day, and have responsibility, full responsibility, for their academic growth, for their social and emotional learning, and for their safety. And I know what it means to feel the weight of that responsibility on your shoulders 24 hours a day, all year long. I'll bring that perspective to setting and evaluating educational policy in Cambridge. And for 15 years, I've worked in communications and program management, in education nonprofits, and at Brandeis University. I'll bring that perspective as well, using skills that will be key in this role. We need to continually improve our schools with a sense of urgency. Every child only gets one shot at this. My daughter's in fifth grade, entering Vassal Lane Upper School next year, and a few short years after that, really, will graduate. My son is in kindergarten, where my daughter was seemingly yesterday. They and their peers cannot afford to wait, and we need to combine this sense of urgency with a long view. We cannot simply churn through policy ideas and program trials. We need to follow through, evaluate, support, improve upon the things that we're doing well, and we need to make hard decisions about which initiatives we need to change or eliminate. I have a number of priorities that I've outlined on my website and that I don't really have time to talk about in this intro session, but I do just want to say that I know the classroom, I know our community, I know how to build consensus and get things done. As a parent and as a community member, I'm proud of the Cambridge Public Schools, but I'm not satisfied. Let's challenge ourselves to do better for all the children of Cambridge. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Patty Nolan?
Thank you. I'm Patty Nolan, and I love my job, and I hope to keep my job, and I will if enough people vote number-one for me. So, honestly, when I look at this campaign, my overall message sounds a lot like what got me to run in the first place, right? Let's be honest. With $27,000 a student, a city full of people with passion, expertise, and dedication, an amazing community, and institutions, there is no excuse for us not being the best school district in the state and the country, and we're not. We're pretty good, but we're not there. So, if the issues are the same, do I deserve reelection? Why not elect some new folks? Because I get the job done, I've worked hard, I'm responsible, and have helped lead some of the improvements that have happened over the last 10 years. I represent you well, I push for change when warranted, and advocate for best practice incessantly. By reelecting me, you would have someone on school committee who has accomplished a lot and advocates for truly all students, advanced, struggling, typically developing, special needs, all backgrounds, all students. Both my kids went K through 12 in Cambridge Public Schools, and I, before this, had worked in the public sector, nonprofit, and for-profit sector, in corporate settings including McKinsey, small companies, worker-owned startups, and now my job is working for you. Now, there's another thing. Someone asked me as I was out campaigning, so does school committee actually do anything, and did you accomplish anything? I had to honestly assess and reflect, and the answer is yes, resoundingly. This term, we've accomplished a lot. We, the whole school committee, and I personally also, had a role in a number of really positive advances. World-language in elementary, hallelujah, after five years of delay. Level up at CRLS, discipline policies being revamped, a critical look at our school choice policy, free hygiene projects for students, review of assessments, fewer tests given, design lab-led by teachers, developing a strategic vision. I collaborate with others, and I understand compromise is necessary, yet I'm independent and will vote what I believe is best for students even at political cost. So, I hope to keep serving you.
Thank you, Patty. Emily Dexter?
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, everybody who's watching at home, et cetera. My name is Emily Dexter. I'm serving my first term on the school committee, and I'm running for reelection. I've been in Cambridge with my spouse since about 1990. We have two daughters that went through the schools, and one graduated from Cambridge Ringe and Latin in 2010, and the other one graduated in 214. What I'd like to just spend a few more minutes talking about with you right now is the five things that I think are really important in school committee members that you ought to be looking at when you choose, not just one candidate, because collectively, you're going to be electing six people. So, the first thing I think that you should be asking is you should be looking for people who will take responsibility for the schools, and everything that's good in them, but most importantly, the things that are not working. You need school committee members that say, if there's a problem, I'm partially responsible for that problem existing, and I'm partially responsible for solving it. None of the seven people on the committee can solve a problem alone, but collectively, I feel like, my opinion is that the seven members of the school committee are responsible for what happens on the, in the schools. It's not the superintendent's job to make everything work. It's our job to give the superintendent the correct direction to make things work. The second thing is somebody who really knows the issues, and I think you're going to find out that a lot of us know the issues. I was a parent for 17 years. I learned about the issues through that experience and watching my children and their friends go through the system, and I'm also an education professional. I have a doctorate in human development from the Harvard Graduate School of Education. I worked for five years at a school for deaf children in Framingham as a language specialist, and I've worked at both Harvard and Leslie in the research field. Third, people who understand data and information. That's really important. I've got a lot of statistics background. Fourth, as we've all heard, people who get things done, and I've given you a list of things that I've been able to do in my first 20 months. And fifth, people who are really responsive to constituent services. It's not a matter of helping people only, that's part of what constituent services is, but it's a part of listening to people so you find out where there are the gaps in our policies and our practices so that they can be fixed. So, I'm hoping you'll vote for me number-one. I feel very positive about what I've been able to accomplish, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jake Crutchfield?
Thanks. First and foremost, I want to thank the Ward Six Democrats for putting this forum together. I also want to thank all my fellow campaigners for being here. I know we all have very busy schedules. I can say that I know every single one of us wants what's best for our students and for our district, and that I'm confident, together, whoever of us is elected, we can build towards the district we want to see. This is my second time running for school committee, and over the past four years, I've worked in a variety of educational settings. First, I started as a day-to-day sub throughout the whole district, where I worked for two years, working in almost all of the schools and in almost every grade level. I then spent the past two years working as the full-time building substitute at the Cambridge Port Elementary School. It's there where I really got to understand what it means to be part of a school community, and what it means to make a difference in students' lives every day. It's all of these experiences and more that make me so passionate about education and learning in Cambridge, and it's this passion for education, learning, and teaching that drives me to run for school committee. I've seen firsthand what makes our schools, students, teachers, and staff so special in this district, and it's that they share that same passion for education that I have. But even with all the passion we have, we still face challenges in our district. Challenges such as making sure we have a diverse staff that culturally reflects the students in our classroom. Challenges like making sure we have better lines of communication from school to school so we can share our best practices and build within them, and the challenge we've always faced in education, the achievement gap, which has plagued our school for decades. I'm going to be straightforward with you and tell you, I alone don't have all the solutions to those problems, but what I really believe is that we need to work together as a community to tackle those issues. And what I can say, that if elected, I will work day in and day out, bringing as many people to the table as possible so that we can tackle those issues as we should be, together and as a community. So, I hope that you consider me, Jake Crutchfield, for your number-one vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence Kimbrough?
First and foremost, I just wanted to say, Leslie, happy birthday to you. I don't know if you're watching on television or not, but I'm sorry I had to leave you this evening on your fifth birthday, but if you are watching, I just wanted to give you a birthday shout-out and say I love you, and the only reason I would leave you this evening before bedtime is to be here for this important conversation. I wanted to be very clear about my intentions for running for the Cambridge School Committee. As a parent in the Cambridge Public Schools, as a graduate of the Cambridge Public Schools, as a former Cambridge Public School employee, I'm here strictly for dismantling the legacy of white supremacy and racism within the Cambridge Public Schools. I feel very strongly that as a member of the school committee, I'm very uniquely qualified to tackle and address this issue in a way that no other candidate who's currently running for the Cambridge School Committee has. And I do believe that as a former Cambridge Public School employee and as a graduate of the schools, I've uniquely seen the struggles and challenges that plague our school district and prevent us from addressing the issues of inequality that I currently believe are systemic and plaguing our city. A survey that was released this summer, or no, I'm sorry, questionnaire and data that showed this summer that a plurality of black families within the city of Cambridge are earning $20,000 or less in this city. I don't believe that acceptable, and I do feel like the Cambridge Public Schools should play a very vital and important role in addressing the lack of equity that is currently debilitating our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter Mikros?
Hello. I'm Peter Mikros. I have spent over half-decade of my life serving as a chief scientist of edics, an MIT-Harvard initiative to broadly improve university education worldwide. It's an initiative I proposed to MIT about over a half-decade ago. In that role, I've interfaced with substantially all of the educational research communities to bring best practices back to partner institutions around the world, and that includes schools like MIT and Harvard, but also community colleges, schools throughout the developing world, and we've had tremendous success improving learning outcomes by bringing the science of learning to school systems. With my son entering the Cambridge Public School District, I hope to do the same here. I've taught in a variety of formats, in a variety of classrooms, from formats where students work together in groups with minimal instructor supervision, to small groups guided by mentors, to blended formats integrating technology with human instruction, to pure digital formats, and all of those have been able to result in learning gains over the traditional lecture-based format. My hope is that, working on the school committee, I can act as a bridge between school committee policies, between what happens in the district, and evidence-based scientific, evidence-based in science, the science of learning.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. And last, Alechi Kadetti?
Last but not least. Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Ward Six, for hosting this event. My name is Alechi Kadet, and I am a new candidate, not a new candidate, but I'm a candidate for school committee, and I want to tell you why I want to ask for your number-one vote on November 7th, a few reasons. First of all, I deeply care about education, and I deeply care about all of our students, all of our students, and I understand the value of education, what it does for a person in terms of enabling them for success and mitigating ignorance, for example. Second, I have an insider's perspective. I went through a school system. I've heard a lot of candidates here say that they have seen the achievement gap. They, they see it, but I want to tell you that I moved here when I was four years old from Tanzania, Africa, with my mother and my brother, and I wasn't achieved, I was in the achievement gap. I went through it. I've experienced it. I started the Maynard when I was for kindergarten. I went to the Agassi, which is now the Baldwin Middle School, and I graduated from the high school in 2007. And the important part about, about this for me, which I've never said before, was that I was an ESL student. I didn't speak English fluently or properly, probably until, until the eighth grade, and once I learned how to speak English, I took advantage, and I went to college, and I'm working as a financial analyst now for a nonprofit company. And third, I'm deeply entrenched in the community and the kids. During the summer, I coached a young ladies' basketball team. I'm a board member and treasurer for the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association, and I'm a board member for the Cambridge Residence Alliance, and I'm on the Cambridge Peace Commission, but a lot of other things, right? Yeah, so I'm deeply entrenched. I deeply care, I deeply care about education, and I want to ask for your number-one vote on November 7th, and I'm not greedy. So, after you vote for me, consider these other folks. Thank you.
Vote early and often, what a good watchword for us. And introducing the candidates who are here and those who are absent, I neglected to mention one other missing candidate tonight. Will MacArthur had emailed me early this morning explaining, Will's a university student, lives in a dorm, and one of those rampant close-quarter student illnesses apparently was swept either his campus or at least his dormitory. I won't go into grisly details, but Will is under quarantine. Hopefully, Will, if you're listening to the live stream or watching a broadcast of this later on, we hope that you get released and/or, if you do become symptomatic, recover quickly and come back to the next scheduled school committee forum to give us good teaching on student health in close quarters. We'll move on to the first of the prepared questions. Class, you all have your essays, don't turn them, and you'll read from them. And the first of the two questions is, please describe succinctly your political and/or educational philosophy. You have two minutes, and we'll start with Manika Bowman. I'm sorry, we're going to rotate, we're going to start with Fran Cronin, come back around to you at the end. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm going to explain my philosophy this way. In last year's 2016-2017 incoming kindergarten class, 597 students, 245...
There's a little slide button there.
That's it? Okay, all right. So, just, I'm going to explain my philosophy this way. In last year's incoming 2016-2017 kindergarten class, 597 students, upon enrollment, 245 of those students were identified as high-needs. At the end of last year, one-third of third-grade class was not reading proficient. In 2014, six years after graduation, only 36% of our low-income students had obtained any type of post-secondary degree. Stated simply, my philosophy is, this is not good enough. We are a city with tremendous resources, tremendous opportunity, tremendous talent, and great wealth, and we need to do everything we can to apply our abundant resources to make sure that the majority of our students graduate from our schools, graduate from our high school, successful, successfully. And a couple of things that we need to do where I think our resources can really make the most good is greater access to early childhood education. We know it's the best investment we can make. Social, emotional learning practices to support teacher empathy and student resiliency. More opportunity for 21st-century skill-building. The largest number of jobs currently are the high-tech skills jobs, and we have no capacity for helping our students enter those career fields. And building a strong and dynamic, diverse teaching force. We know students do better when the teachers in front of them look like them. And some may say our current success is good enough, but a mixed bag of results is not good enough. We should be graduating students with the skills they need to pursue the careers of their choice. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
So, how would I succinctly define, let me go with my political educational philosophy? So, I'd call myself a progressive pragmatist. The Cambridge goals of academic excellence on a foundation of social justice are mine as well, but these goals mean nothing unless we make continual progress. As I noted before, we need to combine a sense of urgency with a long view, with the goal of joyful, excellent education for all. Our children should be inspired, encouraged, and challenged, and our teachers should be supported. It matters what we spend, and it matters how we spend it. We need to spend smarter and wiser so the dollars actually get into classrooms and impact outcomes for our children. My overriding goal is an excellent education for every student in every Cambridge school from every Cambridge neighborhood and every family background. All children deserve an excellent, effective, exceptional, joyous education, an education that prepares them for college, career, and life. A few of the priorities that I didn't get to before that I wanted to mention are a laser focus on closing the opportunity gap in the Cambridge Public Schools with a multi-pronged approach. Expanding public junior kindergarten to all four-year-olds in developmentally appropriate classrooms. Strengthening our still relatively new upper schools, grades six through eight, by supporting teacher collaboration, planning between schools, hiring full-time family liaisons, there are none there, and implementing evidence-based social and emotional learning programming. Guiding the superintendent's implementation of the new strategic plan, so that all of our schools have the resources they need to serve our children well. One of the school committee's most important roles is working with the superintendent. Meeting and exceeding our goal of 30% teachers of color in our schools by supporting, hiring, supporting, and retaining excellent teachers, and ensuring that all Cambridge Ringe and Latin school graduates, as I said, are prepared to succeed in colleges, in college, in careers as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Patty?
Thanks. This was such an interesting question. First, I thought, okay, I'll be conventional, tell you my political philosophy, that I'm a bona fide liberal. At my wedding 20 years ago, we asked for gifts to be donated to Lambda Equal Marriage Fund for LGBTQ people. I was Ms. Lib in my high school superlatives class in 1975, and I lost a job opportunity for not crossing the picket line. Or I could talk about Paulo Freire's impact on me of his educational philosophy, and how I support more learning, less testing, and I'm the only candidate here who voted against Park in CPS because it violated a core educational value that teachers and principals should be consulted, which, unbelievable as it may seem, not a single one had been consulted before the recommendation to do Park by the former superintendent. And then I thought, well, maybe I should answer the question another way. My philosophy towards politics and education are similar. They're centered on, we need to have critical thinking, use data in research-based decision-making, we need transparency, and respect for democratic small-D voice. How that translates in our district is to insist on looking at best practice, like Finland. It's lauded for being high-performing on a number of internationally-normed tests, and while less diverse than Cambridge, it does have lessons for us, like it has far more recess, less homework, and more teacher collaboration time. And the research also shows that students know when they're learning. That translates for me into wanting us to listen more to student voice and use surveys to assess teacher effectiveness. And many of the highest-performing schools are ones where the decision-making is actually at the school level, which doesn't mean that there's no role for central administration in a district our size, but my educational philosophy is that we need to devise methods to ensure that standards are high, students are assessed, and that the need for additional support is identified early, and supports are put in place in a timely manner. Giving school leaders the tools they need to ensure effectiveness in the classroom, and teachers in the classroom that support in continuous improvement all professionals need will help students. It also means holding management accountable for when things are not working, and staff is better suited for a different position.
Thank you, Patty. Emily?
Thank you. I think we both voted against the park on this term, didn't we? Okay. Anyway, that's a, just, just to clarify, that we both had a similar position when that issue came up together. So, Leslie, I'm really glad you asked this question, because this is the same question that you asked the city council at the debate last week, and that's a really important thing about when you go to vote, you're really voting a package. The council and the school committee work together, and it's very important that we think of ourselves as two collaborative and connected bodies. So, I'm really glad that you answered this question. I'm from Washington DC. I grew outside of DC in Maryland, and I'm from a government family. My dad worked for the government, my mother, and my siblings, and my aunts, and my uncles, everybody, for several generations, worked for the government. So, my philosophy is really... So my philosophy is really pro-public sector. I believe that the government is the solution in most cases and not the problem, the opposite of what Ronald Reagan told us, and that the public sector is one of the strongest sectors that we need to focus on. And public education, public schooling, is the biggest public sector we have in this country because we don't have public healthcare, we don't have public housing for most of our population, et cetera. So that's the first part of my philosophy, is really thinking about the public sector and the civic sector, and the civic realm is very important to me. Second, I think of my philosophy around what are the fundamental human rights that a government is supposed to ensure? Food, clothing, shelter, healthcare, and education. I'm sure there's others that I haven't thought of, but those are the five things I think of in terms of my political philosophy. And then again, what kind of government we want? What does good government mean? It means, you know, as we've been talking, it means spending your money well, it means watching your dollars, it means watching your numbers of what is happening, what are the metrics, you're judging your institutions' fine, and being very, very transparent. So I've been trying to emphasize those in the 20 months that I've been on the committee. I've emphasized those in my previous work, but I would say that is my, the most succinct summary of my political philosophy. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Emily. Jake.
I would describe both my political and educational philosophy the same way. Community first and focused on empowering our community to succeed. Our community itself is one of the biggest assets that we have in our district. That's why it's important that with every action we take, we think about the end result of how that action will help our community. And not just that, but how can we make sure that we empower more voices to be part of this process? I think what we must do is give more trust to the leaders inside the classroom, the teachers, because they know what the children and students need most at a classroom-to-classroom level and a school-to-school level. No two classrooms in our district are the same. We must realize that it's impossible for us to see what each classroom needs without actually being there every day. And to be honest, for school committee members, that's really challenging to do. So that's why it means we must get more input from teachers, students, families, especially when it comes to our policymaking. Without proper teacher, student, and family input, we might never be able to fully assess and fix the problems that we face in our district. The school committee as a whole must do a better job of ensuring that we get as much feedback and input as possible for our policymaking to ensure that we're doing the best that we can and that we're involving as many people as possible.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence.
I was very intentional about putting a bell quote on the back of my T-shirt for this year's campaign. Fundamentally, I believe in education as a practice of freedom. Our school district framework that the superintendent recently put out states that he wants all CPS graduates to finish our school with the academic knowledge and skills they need to achieve their goals and post-secondary success as engaged community members. I think my philosophy would just add to that and say that I believe that all CPS graduates as scholars should finish our schools with the understanding of being able to challenge injustice, work towards dismantling the legacy of white supremacy, understand their individual wall in reversing climate change, and be able to actively participate in our democracy. And I believe that our schools should be at the forefront of addressing those issues.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter.
Could you move your bottle of glass? It's impossible for me to see your name.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will talk about my educational philosophy. I'll get to political philosophy, I think, in one of the next questions. My educational philosophy comes down to a set of core principles. I'll name a few of them. Students should be motivated. Students should be actively doing things, not just listening or watching a video, but constructing and manipulating information. Students should be able to spend as much time as they need to master a piece of material without leaving a knowledge gap. Once they've mastered it, move on without wasting time. They should have frequent feedback so they can monitor their own learning. If they do develop a misconception or a knowledge gap, there should be a support mechanism to remedy that. I am agnostic about how these are accomplished. If I have a knowledge gap, that can be fixed by a peer when I'm working as a student group, that can be fixed by a teacher, a parent, technology, that can be fixed by an older student acting as a mentor, that can be fixed by a community volunteer or a community organization, but I want to make sure that this set of principles and others like them are followed. When you follow a set of principles like this, opportunity gaps close. We've been able to use courses from MIT and community colleges, Cal State schools around the developing world. We put these supports initially for MIT students. When we've applied them elsewhere, they work just fine. We first saw our experience was unique. We then saw the same thing repeated in experiments, well, in high-support, high-expecting charter schools and some of the experiments with Khan Academy content. When you follow that set of principles, all students learn much more quickly, and we found that there were research results going back decades showing this.
Thank you, Peter. Oletchi.
Thank you, Peter. My political and educational philosophy, so I'll be frank with you because I'm proud of it. I'm a left-wing activist, I'm a proud Democrat, and I'm a liberal. And I was upset when Bernie lost, but I realized what could happen if the other candidate won, and I supported Hillary. And I'm not afraid to work with other people of other political views as long as we're doing what's best for everybody. But I stand for, first, equal pay. When I was growing up, my mother worked three or four jobs, and she did not make as much as her male counterparts, and that affected my brother and I directly. What could we afford in the resources we had? So equal pay. Women should make exactly the same as their male counterpart for equal rights. You shouldn't tell a person who they can or cannot marry based on who they choose to love. And that affects me closely because I have a lot of friends who are, a lot of friends who, a lot of friends who are homosexual, so I deeply care about them. Another thing is universal healthcare. We should provide healthcare for each and all, every American, and we should make it affordable. You shouldn't have to go bankrupt if you hurt yourself. You know, that's not right in this country with all the resources and everything we have, and that directly affects our students when they graduate from the high school and if they're fortunate enough to have a parent who's working and that can have them on their healthcare plan. What happens when that parent, when they're forced off that healthcare plan? Another issue that's very important to me is free education, making education affordable. You shouldn't have to go broke or go into debt or pay $60,000 a year to go to college because many students can't afford it. So free education and equity inequality for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Oletchi. And finally, Manika Bowman on this round.
Before I go into answering the question, I just want to correct something that was said earlier. I do have a three-year-old child, and there are other people that's here today that also have young children that's running for school committee. So I just want to acknowledge that there are multiple people here at the table that understand that experience.
Thank you.
As it relates to my philosophy on education, it's really simple. Students and kids need to be at the center of every single decision we make. Kids of color, kids from a lower socioeconomic backgrounds, advanced learners, kids with disabilities, kids that's in the middle, we need to always make decisions with our children in mind. And one thing that I've learned as a school committee member in my first term is that sometimes we make decisions based on a lot of other externalities. And it's very challenging as a school committee member to take a lot of different voices that come at you as it relates to a decision and make sound choices that's going to benefit all children. And as a school committee member, that is your challenge, and that is the discipline that you have to have in order to serve effectively to meet the needs of all of those different categories that I mentioned. So for me, education, in order to provide quality education, students have to be at the center of decision-making, and that should guide everything we do.
Thank you. Thank you, Manika. Before we move on to the next round, could we call on two volunteers? One may be seated on an aisle seat on either side to collect the questions that have been completed. If you have a completed card or paper, hold it up. If you need a piece of paper, hold an empty hand up and we'll get one to you. So we'll move on to the second round of prepared questions, and the second question is a two-parter. What do you see is the most important issue facing the Cambridge School Department during the two years of the term for which you are running, i.e. from January of 2018 to January of 2020, and beginning of January of 2020? And second half is what do you see as the most important issue facing the school committee during that time? You have combined two minutes. You don't have to divide it evenly, however best answers the question, and we'll start this one with David Weinstein.
Well, I think I can probably answer it in fewer than two minutes because I think the most important issue facing the Cambridge School Department is the same as what's the most important issue facing the school committee. And I think working together is really the nature of the role, the school committee. Well, I'll just get right to that point. The most important task we face is guiding the superintendent's implementation of the new strategic plan. This document we have, there was an extensive process of community input, lots of thought put into the frameworks document that we have, but now the proof is in the pudding, to coin a phrase, or maybe not. One of the school committee's most important roles is, as I mentioned before, working with the superintendent as well. The committee serves as the nexus between students, families, the administration, the community at large, staff. We must ensure that the actual impact in the classroom of this strategic plan meets our goals and that we continue to communicate with all stakeholders in the community throughout the process. I listed several goals earlier, and as I mentioned, they're on my website. These goals, I believe, support the strategic objectives of the plan, but as I say, it's going to come down to what are the specifics? How do we set the priorities? How do we determine which things we're doing right now that need more support, need modification, need to be eliminated? Which things have we done in the past that we've let slide, or which things do we need to do new? Because as I think everybody has said, we have room to improve. And in certain areas, the issue of equity, the issue of opportunity gap, this is, it's critical. It's critical because our children's lives and futures depend on it. So that strategic plan has to be more than really well-thought-through phrases, and I don't mean to minimize it in any regard, but it really will come down to how we implement it and keep those lines of communication open during that process.
Thank you, David. Patty.
So I think I agree. When I thought of this question, I thought, well, of course, I'll say it's the achievement gap or the opportunity gap or testing, because all of those are critically important. But then I thought about it, and I actually believe it is doing the hard work of addressing ongoing issues by having the political courage to take on some things we have not attacked as strongly as we might have. Every year, we talk about goals, and somehow we never reach them, so we put them into the next set of goals. It demonstrates either we're not intentional about a plan to achieve the goals or serious about monitoring progress towards the goal or passionate enough to push harder when we're not meeting them. The goals I'm thinking about are every third grader reading at least at grade level, every student feeling cared for, safe, and confident and capable, every eighth grader passing Algebra I, every family getting into one of their top two schools. We can do each of those if we face the issues head-on and infuse our entire district with a sense of urgency or whatever other goals that we're setting. The key to getting that done, it's pretty clear. Work well as a team with the superintendent and administration. Use community expertise. I bet Peter would say, at X, we haven't called them for their expertise working across the country in schools. I know for sure, having talked to a number of people at Harvard Graduate School of Education working on the achievement gap, we don't bother to walk across the common and ask them for their help. Some of our own teachers have phenomenal practices, and they have not been tapped to help other teachers. I think we're moving in the right direction, but we need to get to continue to do that. World Language is an example. We could have started a program five years ago, three years ago, one year ago if the school committee as a whole, meaning four of us, had stated unequivocally that it had to happen. I believe it's educationally a very sound thing, and we have to do it for our students. And honestly, the program we're having right now is a compromise. It's only in two more schools and not K-5, but it's happening, and it's happening because we decided to make it happen. And we, as a team, insisted on it. So we must focus on our goals and together mentor and help Dr. Saleem have the best team possible and the best configuration possible. None of us can do this alone. The other final way that we can get there is every family, regardless of color, socioeconomic or learning style, needs to be heard, valued, and respected, and that will help us get to where we need to go also.
Thank you, Patty. Emily.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie, for the question, and I agree with David that there really is, it's only one question because whatever the school department is working on is what the school committee should be working on. We're there to support them and to guide them and to collaborate with them. The three things that if I'm re-elected that I'd like to work on next year is beginning, at the beginning of the pipeline when the kids come into the system and at the end of the pipeline when they go out of the system. And that's not to say that the middle isn't important, but where I'd like to put my focus first is what Fran Cronin was talking about, is resolving the early childhood situation. Right now, it's both an equity issue, it's a funding issue, and it's an economic issue. First, we need to really figure out about four-year-olds because right now we have a policy where only half of our four-year-olds are given a taxpayer-funded education. To me, that's very unfair. So basically, we really need to address that unfairness, not just the fact that it's important that kids get access to early education, but it's important that our government is fair. So I'd like to work on the issue first of the four-year-olds, and if we can figure that out, then I'd like to go thinking about the three-year-olds in collaboration with the Department of Human Services. The second I'd like to think about is controlled choice, which we haven't reviewed for about five years, but this is where kids come into the system, and it has a lot of very, very valuable goals, but the policies themselves have a lot of detail that are not serving all kids. And so I would like us to spend, and it's going to take a long time, but I would like us to be looking at the controlled choice policy in the next term and really looking through and seeing how we can improve that. The third thing that I'm very interested in is what's happening at the high school. I think we've heard from people who have gone through the high school, and a lot of us have seen our own children go through the high school. It's a segregated high school in some ways, and we need to be thinking about not, we need to be thinking about a new model of secondary education. I'm not talking about reorganizing the high school, which everybody, makes everybody very uncomfortable, but we really need to think about the new models of secondary education that are more flexible, that have more individualized pathways, and thinking about how we can make that high school more of a 21st century school. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jake.
Thank you. I think the answer to both of these questions is the same, and that answer is communication. When I think about the many issues that we face in our schools, as well as the issues we face at school committee, I keep asking myself, are we communicating about these issues effectively enough? For example, when you think of a challenge such as the issue of having a more diverse teaching staff, are we making sure that we're communicating about this challenge effectively enough? Are we communicating well enough with our current teachers of color to make sure that we understand their thoughts on the issue and how we might go about fixing it? Are we communicating well enough to potential teachers applicants for our district about what makes our district so special and why they should come work here? And are we communicating well enough to our students so that we can create pathways for them to go towards the path of becoming a teacher so that they can help give back to a community that has given them so much? As for the school committee, we have to ask, is the body communicating and collaborating well within itself, or do we need to find ways for the body to start working together better? We will always have different issues and challenges facing our schools, whether it's trying to find ways to have a more diverse teaching staff, over-testing, or whatever it might be. We're going to face problems, but I personally believe one of the major solutions to these problems is making sure that we are communicating about them as a community and we're working together to overcome them.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence.
I agree with a lot of what my fellow colleagues up here who are running for the Cambridge School Committee have said, is that the most important issue that we are facing is really being able to support Dr. Saleem's plan for the district and ensuring that all members of our community understand the plan and are working collaboratively with the schools and with the school committee to meet the goals and objectives of the plan. I also believe accordingly that the relationships that are currently on the school committee are vital and important to making sure that we are working through and meeting the goals of the plan. I feel like this is essential work to ensure that all of us are working collaboratively and working together, understanding the goals that we have as a school committee, and being able to hold each other accountable not only to meet those goals, but holding each other accountable to the relationships with each other to be able to work towards meeting those goals. I believe that those are two very, very essential and important factors that are facing the school district, and I believe that I am uniquely qualified as a former Cambridge Public School employee, as a employee, as a former Cambridge Public School graduate, and as a parent in the Cambridge Public Schools to do this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter?
I think the most important issue that underlies many of these issues is organizational dynamics and how we've structured where decisions get made. The school committee needs to act as a high-level, board-level body focused on learner outcomes. I have deep respect for the school committee members, the teachers, and the people in the system. We have tremendous resources going, as Spade Yon points out, we spend $27,000 per student. We have partnerships with other top research institutions, but we're not seeing the outcomes we want. And I think a lot of that comes down to how we've managed and how we've organized ourselves. So first of all, a lot of this is about what the school committee shouldn't do. The school committee shouldn't get involved in national or local politics where it doesn't fit into student outcomes and student developments. That doesn't mean that doesn't get down, but it moves to the administration and the city council. It shouldn't get involved in micromanagement. We have grades from junior kindergarten through 12th grade, 18 schools, many disciplines, students of all nationalities, ethnicities, all backgrounds, advanced learners, special needs, students of all types. This is not something that the school committee can be an expert on, but it needs a few times per month. What it needs to do is create an environment where people most familiar with the issues are empowered to make the decisions and effect positive changes. Students, teachers, community organizations, parents. This is a complex process. This is a process which involves, first of all, reducing regulation, improving transparency. So when good things happen, we can identify them and putting in mechanisms where vast practices can disseminate. So if you do, if somebody does affect a positive change, that can spread throughout the district. If we can get those pieces in the right place, I think we can solve many of the other problems.
Thank you, Peter. Eletchi?
So the first issue I want to talk about facing the school department, I would say, is the desirability of schools. The Amigos is regarded as the number-one choice for parents when they're sending their kids to school. And I've spoken to parents where if their child didn't get into the Amigos, they got into another school, and they were upset because they felt like their child wasn't going to get as good of an education as they would have gotten in the Amigos. So we have to evaluate and find out why this is going on. Second is the segregation in the AP courses. Our district is majority-minority, but in the AP courses, the minority of the majority. So again, I'm proud of programs like Level Up, but this is something we're also going to have to really evaluate and rectify. Another issue facing the school department is the hiring and retention of high-quality teachers of color. When I talk about teachers of color, I don't mean we should go out and hire a teacher just because they're of color. We have to hire high-quality teachers of color that can effectively do the job, not only hire them, the next thing is to retain them and keep them here. And I want to pick up Richard Harding's proposal to tie principal evaluations to the amount of teachers of color they interview, hire, and retain. Now, some issues facing the school committee, I would say, is the evaluation of the superintendent. Yesterday, the superintendent received a proficient evaluation, and the bar was set low because he's fairly new, and I can understand that. But in this coming term, we have to hold him to high standards, higher standards, and make him accountable. Another one is the achievement gap. I know, I worked with kids this summer who raised championship banners for the school but were not prepared for college. Many colleges that they could have played sports that were not making them offers because of their grades, but yet they played on the team. Another one tying into that is college preparedness. And I want to end by, I know I have a few seconds, but I want to end by saying, another issue facing the school committee is the budget, you know? The budget over the past six years has been over $150 million. And Cambridge is very good at implementing programs, sort of in a spray-and-pray fashion, where you start a lot of programs and you hope and pray that work. But what I want to see is that we start programs, but we evaluate them to make sure that they're meeting the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Eletchi. Monika?
I think one of the challenges that we need to address within our school district from the top all the way to the community level is the ability to stay focused, the ability to go beyond the talking points. And I want to be really frank and clear with you. All the candidates up here, we live in Cambridge, which is a very liberal, progressive city. And so therefore, as it relates to philosophies and what we believe, there's going to be very little variation. There'll be things that we disagree with, but we're going to agree on a lot of things. And so that brings me to what the challenge is. In the city of Cambridge, a lot of times, we really struggle to go beyond the surface. And so we will all say that we want to have more teachers of color in our school district, but what does it mean to actually implement that? And I'm very proud to say, in my first term, I took a step back to figure out, okay, this is a system. This is not about me. I know that I am only as powerful as the people that will agree to vote with me in order to move anything forward. And so I was very intentional about taking a step back and recognizing that the school committee is there to govern. We have subcommittees. We need to leverage our subcommittees to actually do the work necessary to create the change that we want to see. We will not create change by just coming to a school committee meeting and just discussing things. We have to take a step back and be able to do the work and stay focused. We have to do that in the schools by not allowing all the initiatives to just keep popping up, but rather continue to evaluate, well, first evaluate them, because historically, we do not do that. And that has been a part of the work that we've done in this term, to figure out, how do we create the system necessary to address that change? And that is why we were able to move the district-wide planning effort forward. I'm very proud of the work that I've done. I know that this is not easy work, and it takes strategy, and it takes understanding the system that you operate in to truly affect change. And that is what you need to be looking for in a school committee member.
Thank you, Monika. And finally, on this round, Fran.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to agree a lot with my colleagues, but that's just a preface to what I'm going to talk about. So I do agree that the school committee and also the administration should be seamless. They should be working in concert. They should be able to demonstrate the leadership around what I'm going to call expectations. And I think that we have a lot of missed opportunities in our district because the expectations are not clear. The expectations are not clear in the principal level, and the principals, again, are leaders of our schools. And I think everything is in service to try and overcome what I will call, what Paul Revel calls, the zip code effect. And that means that we have kids who do really well because their families have provided them with opportunity, and we have students for whom life at home, coming to school, spending the day is much more challenging. And so what are we doing to overcome what I'm going to call the zip code effect? And everything that my colleagues have talked about here, they are tools. They're all great ideas, and they are tools. What we really need to do is sit down and figure out what it is that we want to accomplish. What do we want to accomplish? You have to think of schools like, it's almost like a narrative. We have a beginning, we've got a middle, and an end. So what do we want for our students when they come into our schools? We talk about early childhood education. What is the expectation for students who go through early childhood education and into our schools in kindergarten? We have third-grade reading proficiency. We know that's the benchmark. We have our upper schools, which I support, incredible time to really build the resilience, the self-identity, the motivation of our students, to really propel them through high school so they can graduate successfully into the careers of their choice. So I will go back and say, it is concert in leadership expectation and really making sure we have those clear expectations for every step along the way for every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. So we're going to move on to questions submitted by members of the audience. We're going to make these a little bit shorter so that we can get a lot of questions in. And I'll announce the time. Timekeeper, please keep pace. The green and yellow cards have alternate timings on, so for 30 seconds, if we do 30-second questions, use the shorter times, otherwise, continue with the 10 and 20. So the first question in this round, and we'll start with Patty here. What have you done or what do you plan to do to get universal pre-K into Cambridge? How would you expand the current pre-K program? We can take up to one minute on this one, you don't have to. Patty?
Okay, thanks. This is a critically important question, as I think all of us agree, the kids don't come to us as blank slates when they're age four or five. We are lucky in Cambridge that we have, half of our four-year-olds do have public school education, and we also have a couple of programs that start at three. My view on early education is, honestly, that it's not just a school department issue. This has to be something that we have to work with the city on, and we have to work with all the nonprofit, all the public sector, all the private partners who are already providing childcare for students across the city. I also am afraid, honestly, this may not be popular, but I don't actually want the school department necessarily to be the only one providing education for three- and four-year-olds. And here's why. We already have kids coming into kindergarten who are being tested. And I think it's just an inevitable pressure that if they're part of a school district, we're going to overtest kids if they come to us at three- and four-year-olds. On the other hand, if we work with the city and have like the Capuano Center built over at Alewey, which is something I advocated for, very specifically on school committee, for us to do an early education center to ensure high-quality, joyful education for every single, starting with all our four-year-olds and then three-year-olds and before.
Thank you, Patty.
Can't believe I ran out of time, sorry.
Emily? One minute.
These are one minute. Okay, great. So the first thing I'd like to do is look at our JK program for four-year-olds, and we have three choices. We can make it universal for all four-year-olds, we can make it for no-four-year-olds, or we can make it for all, with the means tested, for low-income four-year-olds. So I'd like us to make that choice, I'd like us to make that choice, and I'd like us not to do it through an enormous process, but really to make a policy decision about that. Because collaboration is great, but processes can take a long time. We're really good on process in Cambridge, and we don't make a lot of quick decisions. The other thing I'd like to do is, we have empty seats in our JK program now, and we also have a waitlist of children trying to come into our preschool. So the first thing I would do is have a policy where if there are empty seats in our preschool by November or December, children who are waiting for opportunities to come into our JK program can come from our preschool waitlist into those empty seats. That makes sense to me. So those are the first two things that I would do, and those are two things that I've been working on this year. Thank you.
Jake?
Thank you. I have to agree with the previous two speakers. I think what we really do need to do is support the city's work and collaborate with the city's work on this process. There's lots of people in this city that have been investing hours of work towards this issue, and us as a school committee need to collaborate with this work. I also think what we need to do is raise awareness for families on how to actually get into early pre-K within our city, and whatever we can do to help make that process easier for families. What I do want to speak to is some of my experience in kindergarten, and just to stress the importance of universal pre-K. You can tell in kindergarten, when students come in, those that have had pre-K and those have not. Not just academically, but also how they interact with their peers, how they share, how they work in groups. It's really such a crucial issue that all of our kids come into school at the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence?
So I do support some of the suggestions that the fellow, my colleagues up here have mentioned. I would say this is not fully an issue that I've thought over. What I would say is that as someone who just spent $70,000 over the past four years on my daughter's daycare and preschool education, I don't think anyone up here wants to do this work as much as I do, so I recognize the importance of it. But I'd also say, as someone who walked into my daughter's junior kindergarten classroom this morning and saw one of our young men sitting alone by himself, pulling apart a Charlie card, I agree with what Jay Crutchfield said around our students coming into junior kindergarten at different levels. And I certainly do believe that as a district, we must do a better job of assuring that all of our students are coming into kindergarten ready to learn.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter?
I have not that much sweat about how to bring universal pre-K in place. We have strong evidence that attitudes toward school are set by that, and that it is a very helpful thing. What I can say is that the school committee can do many other things while waiting on city council in terms of early engagement. Programs like Baby U, where parents of 18 months old have the option of extra training, can be very effective. We can build a lot of early engagement programs that aren't quite expensive as universal pre-K to act as a stopgap measure. So I would also be in support of that.
Thank you, Peter. Eletchi?
I am a big supporter of early education, but the problem around it is, who does it, right? Because the government doesn't mandate junior kindergarten. I was out canvassing yesterday and talked with the lady who told me that her daughter is number 100 on the junior kindergarten waiting list in Cambridge and has not moved, and is worried that the daughter will go into kindergarten without having the benefits of a junior kindergarten program. What would I do to implement junior kindergarten? Well, I'm a trained financial analyst, so what am I going to do? I'm going to go to the budget. I know that, look at the budget, we have close to $200 billion. So I would evaluate the programs and find out what programs aren't working. And I would also tell my school committee colleagues that early kindergarten is important because it helps to mitigate the achievement gap. It's a highly desirable program that we have to implement. Thank you.
Thank you, Eletchi. Monika?
So this is the issue that is dear to me, because I have a three-year-old daughter that did not get off of the city waiting list or the school department list, which I think that's a good, well, bad for me, but it shows that our school department has integrity, that as a school committee member, that I have no preference. So I wanted to say that. That said, I think that we need to look to the city of New York. The mayor, Mayor de Blasio, came in and he said, I want universal pre-K for everyone. That took leadership. So number one is going to take leadership. It's going to take leadership from the school committee as well as the city, because in that model, it wasn't just about the schools providing it. They did an assessment of the city and touched every single entity that provided childcare service, and then gave that information to the public and created a subsidy program in order to make sure that every child in that city has access. I think that the city of Cambridge should duplicate that, and I think we need to get really serious about actually living into our values and stop talking about this and make it a reality. But it's going to take more than just one person and one entity in the city to do it. It's going to be, it has to be a joint partnership between the city and the school department.
Thank you, Monika. Fran?
Thank you. There are a couple of things my colleagues have already said here. One is the collaboration between the city and the school department, and I'm also the only person here who has city-side experience and also experience in the halls of our schools. So I see how both entities work. And currently, one of the challenges is that we are very siloed. And the other challenge is, we have a very deep waiting list. And the other challenge is that the family with the highest needs have the least access, because navigating a waitlist is not an easy thing to do. And generally, people who are not as integrated into our community have the least amount of information knowing when they need to register their children. So I'm going to just put that out there, that that's one of the big barriers. Baby U, if you've ever been to a graduation, it is fantastic, and I applaud that program. It is really a joy to behold. And we don't have to look to New York on how to do early childhood education. We can look at Everett. Everett does not have the resources we have, has the same number of students that we have, and they have early childhood education for every single student in that community. So again, I think that we have to work with what we have. We have zero-to-third-grade partnership, we have to support them, expand access, and accelerate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. And David?
Well, I strongly support universal junior kindergarten for all four-year-olds, and then expanding earlier than that. It's an issue of equity, it's an issue of educational opportunity. It would never be a requirement, but not to have that option for people who need it or want it is not right, especially because there are families here who, in this community, who can afford to find options that work. And we should make sure that it's developmentally appropriate. My daughter did not meet the cutoff for junior kindergarten, which meant we did spend a lot of money, but we had a great place for her to be. But not everybody has that option. My son did meet the cutoff, and last year was in junior kindergarten. And I will say that it only strengthened my belief that it needs to be developmentally appropriate, it needs to be joyful, it needs to meet the needs of kids who are coming in with particularly strong needs, but not putting them in some sort of academic track when they're only three or four years old. But this is a place, whereas others have mentioned, we can look to other examples where it's been done, and we have to work with the city council. It's about space, it's about budget. This is a place where we can be working with them, helping push each other forward for the greater good of the city.
Thank you, David. Patty? Oh, no, you started something. Okay.
Everyone said it was great.
Everyone said it was great.
Rebutts later. The next question moves to the other end of the student population range. Our upper level and high schools are now over capacity. Predictions are that Cambridge will continue to grow in population. Editorial comment from the moderator may be big enough that we can have one member of Congress for the whole city, but I diverge. How can we accommodate these growing numbers, and what must happen to have every student engage productively and positively in school life? Again, we'll take one minute, and we'll start with Emily Dexter.
Leslie, you're talking specifically about the high school.
Yeah, high school. The question was, upper level and high schools.
Okay, okay. Yes, it is a really big issue, because when we designed the upper schools, the idea was that there were to be only 88 kids in every cohort, so that you'd have 22 kids per class and a class size of 22, and we're exceeding that already, and we're only five years into it, and we're projected to have more. And the same thing is happening at the high school. Every year, we get more and more kids than we project. So, I haven't thought that much about the upper school, I'll be frank, but the high school, I think what we'll need to be thinking about, these more flexible pathways. Right now, we have a pretty standard high school where you have four blocks, and you take history, and you take English, and you go through these steps, and then there's these elective, really interesting elective pathways that come off of that. I'd like to flip that and think about, how do we make the really interesting pathways the center part of the high school, and then that you have various types of required courses that the state requires that are appended onto those interesting platforms? So, we might end up with more kids learning outside of the high school during a lot of the day, so we'll solve some of the place problems with some of that flexibility.
Thank you, Emily. Jake?
Yeah, I think that's a serious issue. I think you can ask any student at the high school, and they'll tell you that they're feeling like it's starting to be overcrowded. Literally, walking in the hallways feels like you're fighting your way through a sea of other students. I think what we need to be doing about it is start planning much, much, much farther out about how to address this issue, whether that means getting creative and finding alternative space, or even the possibility of adding an extension to our high school. We need to be addressing this issue, because when students feel crowded, they don't feel like they can really develop a sense of community with one another, and it's important that we let them have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence?
I certainly do agree that this is an issue that we certainly do have to address and be focused on. As someone who worked at the high school as a guidance counselor, and as someone who worked there as a special education teacher, I certainly do recognize the challenges that students have of getting from the basement of the arts building to the fifth floor of the Ringe Building in four minutes. It's not a very, very easy challenge, so I do think that we need to think collaboratively about how we make sure that the space is adequate enough so that students can get to class on time, that there is good enough space for active and engaged learning to be taking place. I also do want to say that, for myself personally, the issues of educational inequity are at the forefront of my campaign. I haven't necessarily thought too specifically about the crowding and space issues that the schools are under, but what I will say is that in the current economy that we have, I do think that the public high school has gotten a lot more popular. We're going to go over 2,000 students this year, and I do think this is a really important issue for us to be thinking about. I just have not fully thought about it quite yet.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter?
I will actually largely echo what Lawrence said, which is that this is not an issue where I am an expert. To be an expert, I would need to work through both population growth projections, budget projections, billing, cost projections, that sort of thing. Until I become an expert, I would defer to those who are. That's why I'm nice to have a school committee with six members plus the mayor, is that we can each contribute in our areas of expertise.
Thank you, Peter. Eletchi?
I want to open up by saying that, in Cambridge, there are three distinct phases in a young scholar's life or a scholar's life. The first is K through five, kindergarten through the fifth grade. The second is the middle schools, the innovation agenda, and the third is the high school. And we have to add a fourth, early education, make it accessible to all parents who want it, and we have to think about these issues equally. We cannot, we can't say, "I'm not going to think about you at the upper school, now we'll think about you again at the high school." It doesn't work like that. Each phase has to be robust. Now, we're dealing with a population issue, increased class size or overcrowding in the high school. So, what we have to do is, I like what Jake said, we have to find alternat, look at the budget. We have the money, we have the resources. Look at the budget, find alternative space, expand the high school if we have to.
Thank you, Eletchi. Monika?
The Chair of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, this is the work that we have taken on to at least have an initial conversation about as it relates to growth across the entire school district and the projected growth that we are looking to have, particularly in the context of all the new development that is happening in the city. All you have to do is look to El Wif and then look over to East Cambridge, and you'll see that there, the assumption was that families would not be in those buildings, and there are tons of families in those spaces. And so, what we're trying to do is figure out, as we bring on these new projects, whether we decide to continue to build new schools. We have a lot of shiny new buildings in our school district, or do we look to renovate some of the buildings that we have to expand capacity? These are challenging issues, because you don't have to look too far to see that there's not too many places to go to get land except going up. And so, I would just say, you would want somebody that's going to take responsibility for making sure that the Buildings and Grounds Committee actually meets, to be able to make sure these conversations continue to move forward. And I want to say that before I came on board, last turn before me, the Buildings and Grounds Committee did not meet, so these conversations were not being had.
Thank you, Monika. Fran?
Thank you. I think we have to look at this, I think we have to look at this challenge in two different ways. One is management of bodies. We have certain number of students, we are expanding in our enrollment, and the other is, how do we build community? So, you know, ideally, we want our school system to grow. So, in the high school, there are a couple of things we can do. As someone mentioned, we have a very rigid schedule, but not all classes are created equal, and I think there is a real opportunity to start having longer and shorter classes, and really move the students around a little bit more. We can also take a look at, how do we really maximize our students' senior experience? Does every single senior really need to be in the building the second half of their senior year? It's a great time to start really taking advantage of internships, apprenticeships, and really get the students out into the community, doing different things and not taking up physical space. And the third thing I would talk about is community. We have a structure, CRLS. We do not take advantage of that, of really using that structure, that internal structure, to help the kids feel more united, feel more cohesive, and as if they really are part of a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. David?
So, this is a story of success. I mean, it's a story of the success of the city, it's a story, importantly, of the success of our schools, that they are overcrowded, because people, and the high school is facing this right now, because people are staying, people are coming in, but we need to address it. It's a numbers issue in part. We need to make sure that we're hiring enough teachers so that we're not just stretching classes or eliminating opportunities for students at the high school to follow their passions and follow their, you know, follow what they want to be doing. My daughter's entering upper school next year. The school she's going to, Vassalane or Tobin School, is slated for, you know, reconstruction or renovation, and that's one of those places where there is that possibility because of the space around it to work in concert with the city and maybe make something really creative happen. Also, over by El Wif, where there's population growth, but also a lot of possibility for the city to work on, maybe it's a new school. Senior year is something I wanted to mention, actually. I worked for a number of years in several capacities for something, you can look it up, wis services.org, but it's second half of senior year. I did it myself, an individualized program where you're experiential, you're out in the community, you're preparing to be for college career life. So, I think we can look at opportunities like that and work, again, together with the city, to make sure that we have the funding and the space and the teaching staff.
Thank you, David. Patty?
Thank you. Yes, shout-out to Ms. Bowman, who has held those B&amp;G Building and Grounds Subcommittee meetings, because that is part of the work that we're doing, I'm a member of the committee. Here's the thing. So, there's upper schools, right? Our plan, when we restructured, assumed all of our fifth grades would be a third empty. A third empty, and they are now. In order to feed into, six fifth grades have to feed into four sixth grades. That is not good planning, it's not something I'm proud of, and I think we are going to have to fix it, and I will say it, we're going to have to think about, if we are successful at keeping people, we're going to have to rethink the feeding patterns of the three schools, which we can do. We have buildings right now that are being used as swing space, that hopefully the future will be used as fully occupied upper schools. I'm totally in favor of that. As Eletchi said, you know, we should expand also our elementary programs, those are burgeoning also, and if we keep people, what people also have to realize, people leave in our upper schools. If they didn't leave, our upper schools would, we would already get that to open a fifth upper school. CRLS, the class size is lower because of leadership by the school committee and family and students who begged us to lower the class size, so I will say, I don't have a lot, I don't have time, but because of leadership and student voice, that class size did come down to the school. Yes, it's crowded, but it can accommodate, it used to have 2,500 kids, granted with the higher class size, but we can work around it, we must work around it, and we may have to restructure some of the ways that the high school is operating in order to do that, but I'm convinced we can, and it's a tremendous success that now students are coming back for our high school, which used to happen 20 years ago, and then it stopped for 10 years, and now they're coming back.
Thank you, Patty. For the next question, we're going to continue with one minute for one more round, but I'm going to ask the candidates to see if you can trim your responses to 45 seconds, because we'll be doing a shorter frame for most of the remaining questions, but we'll let you have one minute if you need it. Timekeeper, be aware that we'll change in the next time. Okay, this is a little complicated and worth the extra time. What is or should Cambridge be doing in curriculum development to prepare its students for the kinds of careers that power Cambridge's economy, i.e. technology, computer science, biotech, and so forth? Are there or can there be connections with local research institutions and companies to provide internships and suitable learning opportunities? And we start with Jay Crutchfield.
Great, thank you. This is a great question. I think this is a tremendous opportunity. It's something that makes our city especially stand out. We have things around us that no other city can offer. We have Kendall Square and all the innovation section. We have Harvard, we have MIT, we have Leslie. We need to be utilizing these partnerships and collaborating with them as much as possible. As far as preparing students to work out into that, one thing that we could do is we could start having people who are working in that industry collaborate with the teachers themselves, so that they can get a better understanding of what skills they're looking for, for people that they're hiring. I can also just tell firsthand, I do a lot of work, working, teaching entrepreneurship skills to students and how to start their own business. That's something else we should look into, to try to get more students involved in that kind of the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence?
So, I would say that, from my educational philosophy, I do believe that education should be a practice of freedom. I have real concerns about thinking that schools should be preparing students for the work world. Do I believe that any student who graduates from our high school should be able to have a career for themselves, and ensuring that they have the skills to meet the current economy and the jobs that Cambridge currently has available? I totally do agree with that, but I want to be intentional about saying that, as important is that our students should be able to graduate and be able to address the specific issues that I do fully believe are currently impacting our city. Being able to address issues of racism, being able to address issues of gender inequity and income gaps, being able to address climate change and global warming, I believe that those things should be at the core of the function of our schools, and that preparing kids for career should be a secondary function.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter?
Much of the strength of our university system, the USS, the best university system of the world, not the best K-12 system, comes from the diversity of things that are taught. By the time that students reach high school, they can learn a lot of knowledge in context. Communication, traditionally taught in English classes, can be taught in a journalism class where you're writing to an audience, where it has real world impact. It can be taught, as Jake mentioned, in trying to communicate a business plan. It can be taught in a number of different settings, and increasing the diversity of experiences at high school students do, moving mathematics, moving communication, moving the kind of core soft skills that we want kids developing in that context, I think is something that we should continue to explore. I think it'll take a fair amount of time to get there, however, so I don't want to rush the process, I want it to be a thoughtful, deliberate process.
Thank you, Peter.
Leslie, I agree, this is a complicated question, but we, as the city of Cambridge, are uniquely suited to answer it. Why? Because we have the tax base, we have the location, and we have the resources. Again, we have Harvard, we have MIT, we have Cambridge College, we have Leslie, we have BC, we have Boston University, we have Novartis, we have Google, we have Facebook. We have everything. What we have to do is do a better job of welcoming these companies into our schools and taking our children there to meet the scientists, to meet the executives, to meet the law professors.
Thank you, Eletchi. Monika?
We need a both-and approach to this. Oftentimes, I think a lot of times we get caught up in this college pathway perspective, and I think that's important, but there are jobs in the economy that are not being filled because over the past 10 years, we've just, "Go to college, go to college, go to college", that is the focus. And really, what our school district should be doing is making sure that, A, our students have the basics, because a lot of our kids don't have the basics yet, being able to read by third grade, and having access to really quality math programming by eighth grade. That is a challenge, because if we are not giving our students the basics, then Kendall Square feels like it's, you know, 1,000 miles away when it's right in our backyard. And so, I really think that we need to be intentional about the basics, as well as expand how we talk about career options, because there feels like construction, which, you know, there's labor shortages, because we have not highlighted that there's a diversity of options, and we need to give our students the access, the ability to explore multiple career pathways.
Thank you, Monika. Fran?
Hi, this is a great question, and I really think it also illustrates a huge missed opportunity for us here in Cambridge. We have Kendall Square, we have a comprehensive high school that includes the Ringe School of Technical Arts, and we have very illustrious community colleges that have articulation agreements that surround us. And we need what I'm calling a partnership in STEAM education, some mechanism for really coalescing these entities, so we can build 21st century career pathways for students. Because not every student, even students who are interested in the science and math, are not going to become PhDs, but their biggest growth industry are high-tech skilled. And right now, we have no mechanism for helping our students follow those career paths. Next year, for the first time, we're going to have two labs built in the high school. Students can take those labs, go to Quincy College, where we have an articulation agreement, and for two years, get a certificate and come back to Cambridge to get a job in Kendall Square. This is a tremendous opportunity that we can offer our students, and the potential is here, and I'd love to be able to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. David?
So, as I mentioned before, internship connections or experiential connections are a very valuable way to connect with these resources in our community, but it doesn't only have to happen at the high school level. Even in my daughter's elementary school, they are taking advantage of some of the resources we have in the community to expose children to these fields and to help them build their sense of what they can do and what's possible for them. But I also want to put this in the context of liberal arts education. I've worked for a dozen years now at Brandeis University, a great liberal arts institution, and we think and talk about this a lot, and I think that's what our district provides. We have excellent programs in technical training and preparation, and we should support those. And what we're really trying to do, I think, is develop children who can think, who can adapt, who can learn, because these technologies and these industries are going to change by the time they graduate. So, and I think along the lines of what Mr. Kinber was saying, that they also have that ability to question, to change. I heard somebody recently define entrepreneurship as disruption. They should be able to disrupt things, to move us forward and to move themselves forward, and create those new Googles and all those other things, hopefully right here, but wherever they choose to be. And I think a well-staffed guidance department that is not overwhelmed and has a reasonable caseload can also help with that final step in supporting our children even after they graduate.
Thank you, David. Patty?
Thanks. I agree with all my colleagues. I want to add, actually, a slightly different, but we actually have tons of programs, we have tons of partnerships, we have tons of internships. I sometimes worry there's too many, because sometimes they're not even filled by Cambridge
I sometimes worry there's too many, because sometimes they're not even filled by Cambridge students, because maybe they have other opportunities. So one, we have to find out why sometimes they're not filled. Is it that students don't know, which sometimes does happen, depending on your background? But maybe there are those enough. What I'm really interested in, the question is, as Peter said, the issue of learning is, we need to make sure our students are engaged, interested, curious, and motivated. Because you know what? When they are, they will learn, and employers will want to hire them. Now, it's this, what people talk about as growth mindset, we need to have every, the thing we might want to have curriculum is every single student truly believes in this idea that yes, the mind is plastic, and yes, I can learn, I really can do things, because that will make them really attractive for employers. And then the other things which we are working on, but need to do more of, computer science coding for every single student, there is no reason why not, there's tons of national organizations working on it, critical thinking skills, and world language. Even with Google Translate, if you know another language fluently, you are going to be much more highly employable. That's it.
Thank you, Patty. Emily?
Good. I'm just going to steal everybody else's answers here. So I agree with Pietro's, this whole idea about flexibility and allowing kids to pursue more choices and having more differentiation of options, particularly in the upper school and the high school. I think that's part of this career preparation, is teaching kids how they can make choices and how they can identify what they're interested in. And you do that by making choices between, do I want to take drama, or do I want to take computer science in the next hour? So I think that's one big thing. I think field trips are really important, and I like to see us spend a lot more money on field trips for kids when they're young. We have very restricted field trip opportunities right now, so getting them out into the community. Jake and I were together on STEAM committees, S-T-E-A-M, a couple of years ago. We did a lot of planning around this, to create a STEAM office for the city. And the other thing, just this whole idea about the guidance staff, I think is so important at the upper and particularly the high school, having more people and a stronger program to guide kids to the programs that are already out there.
Okay, thank you, Emily. We're going to move on to mostly 45-second limits for questions, so timekeeper, please reset your timer. And the next question, which we will start with Lawrence Kimbrough, is what is the proper place, if any, of charter schools in the city of Cambridge's educational panoply? Why or why not? Lawrence?
So, not a family pick, but a city-run picking a couple of weeks ago, and I was speaking with a father who had recently had his daughter taken out of the Cambridge Public School and enrolled her in the Bannaker. And when I asked him the specific reason why, he said that it was multiple. One of the reasons that he did it was because his daughter came home one day and asked him a question, "How come none of the teachers look like me?" And so I want to be very intentional in saying that I don't support charter schools. I think they take resources and money away from our students. I do also believe that in Cambridge, many families of color have been choosing the charter schools over the public schools, because we are not doing the good enough job of supporting the social, emotional, and academic growth of our students of color. I do think some, many families in Cambridge do believe the charter schools are doing a better job of that, and I do want to specifically address that issue that Cambridge families have by being a member of the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Peter?
I am politically agnostic on this issue. The problem with charter schools and with public schools is that it comes down to specifics. The context of Cambridge, there's strong opposition to them, some not in favor of charter schools for Cambridge, but a lot of the debate misses, what is the design of a specific charter? What is the design of this particular public school system? Sometimes charter schools work, others don't, and I can't really address that in 45 seconds.
Fair enough. Alechi?
I want to be very careful about how I answer this question, for the reason that I believe that every child deserves an excellent education, no matter where they go to school. But if you go to school in Cambridge, you can receive a top-notch, excellent education through the Cambridge Public Schools. With that being said, there's no need for charter schools in Cambridge. I don't support them. They need to be more transparent, they need to be held accountable, and I want to learn more about them. I want to reiterate that in Cambridge, we have the resources, the location, to offer our children the best possible education through our system. And that's why I'm running for Cambridge School Committee.
Thank you, Alechi. Manika?
I agree that it's hard to answer a question about charter schools in 45 seconds, but I will try to do so. So, as it relates to charter schools, I really, I'm in the middle on this issue. I am a black woman, I grew up in public housing, and I understand the value of having access to quality education. In the city of Cambridge, in our public school system, there is at least a 20 on the small end, 15 on the small end, and up to 30 to 45 cent percentage gap, achievement gap, between kids of color and everyone else in the district. I am sorry, but I am not about to sit up and tell parents of color that they cannot have other options, when the school system that I am responsible for, that I look at these statistics, and it literally makes me sick. If I cannot, in the short term, do something to change that system that will give them a better chance or a better quality education for that child, I think it's irresponsible of me to tell them that they should not have a choice, that my husband and I do have, because we are in a place of privilege. I think that is hypocritical, and I think that we need to work really hard as a school body to change the dynamics, so those families will come back to our school district.
Thank you, Manika. Fran?
Hi, this is what I will say. Cambridge is a choice community. You can send your kids to public school, private school, charter school, parochial school, or homeschool. So we do have a choice community. As Manika mentioned, this is totally the trend, that a lot of families of color are sending their kids to the charter schools. So I think the question is, what are we not providing these students, that these parents are seeking when they go to other schools? And I think that is the question that we need to be asking about, and I think that the best defense against charters are great public schools. One of the big challenges for us in the whole charter school conversation is the financing. In Cambridge, we spent over $11 million sending students, and we are a very desirable district because of our cost per student, and the money follows the student. Thanks.
Thank you, Fran. David?
Yeah, 45 seconds. Well, you can see my website and Facebook page for more, but I will say, I taught in Massachusetts Public Charter School, the match school in Boston, during its second year, which was also a good experience in how a school in its startup phase can work. With regard to Cambridge, I do think that the city should be paying attention to the charter schools in the city and to the experiences and outcomes of Cambridge children attending charter schools. Are they being served well and equitably? And why are Cambridge families choosing charters? It's important we understand what's happening. In some cases, as I think has been alluded to, not even alluded to, just flat out said, they may be seeking something that we're not providing. But in some cases, they may be seeking something we are providing, and we're not doing a great job of sharing the strengths and programs of our schools. Or they might be looking for something we've decided not to provide, a particular curriculum we're not adopting. But when they're identifying shortcomings of the Cambridge Public Schools, we need to make sure that we are identifying those shortcomings. And we can and won't be all things to all people, but we should be providing an excellent education to all children, that enables all children to reach their full potential.
Time. Thank you, David. Patty?
Thanks. I agree with a lot of what's been said. So in Cambridge, what's the role? I am going to say, honestly, I did, was in support of question two, because Massachusetts' public schools are the best and the charter schools are the best. I'm just going to get it right out there. But I did it because Harvard, Stanford, and MIT all had separate studies saying that charter schools, only in Massachusetts, but it included Cambridge, did better for low-income students of color. Who am I to say, as a white privileged person who could have sent my kid somewhere else, that they should not have that choice, when there are thousands of students on the waitlist? There are still hundreds of students in Cambridge on the waitlist. But that is over. What really matters is what has been said, is that we need to have our schools so great that nobody picks a charter school, or nobody picks a private school, because they feel like we're providing them with the opportunity and education that their kids deserve. I will also say, we can learn from charter schools. That's the role. The Bannaker is a fantastic science internship. I've visited all those three schools in Cambridge that are charter schools. CCSC, Cambridge Community Charter School, has this internship program that we should model, where all the kids go out and spend 40 hours in a nonprofit. And Prospect Hill has an amazing junior journey, where kids go to Guatemala for three weeks. So I think we can learn from them, and they can learn from us.
Thank you. Emily?
Okay. We're lucky in Cambridge, we only have three charter schools. They're all very good schools, and they're, we don't have any for-profit charters in the system. I don't want to see more charters come into Cambridge, but I would like to see those charter ideas get pushed into our elementary schools. So when there are parents who want to start a new charter school, because a lot of these things spring up from the community, let's see if we can push that energy into some of our public schools and have the people who are coming up with new ideas, working with the people who are in the schools, to bring those new ideas. We have that, what we have in Somerville, they're starting up a brand-new experimental high school. It's not a charter school, but it's an entrepreneurial environment. But in terms of our current schools, I think we should be collaborating, we are already doing that quite a bit, and more and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jake?
Thanks. Here we go. So, when I think about charter schools, I think about how they were supposed to serve as a place of innovation and testing out of new initiatives in education, and then to be sharing those back, back to the public school, so that we could potentially learn from it. I have not seen that sharing happen, and I think until we do, there's really a problem. I think that there's no accountability for charter schools, and I think that there's no clear pathway on how they can share back yet. I also think what we need to be doing is supporting our upper schools, so that we can make sure that we're keeping families here in Cambridge, because I think that's where it is, is making sure that we have the strongest upper schools around, so that families choose not to leave.
Thank you, Jake. Next question, and this will start with Peter. A number of you have talked about having children either in the school system or on the verge of getting into the school system, but none of you has really talked about families' participation in children's learning. Please do. What avenues for productive engagement, contribution, and interaction with families do you imagine, and what specifically does that look like? Again, we're at 45 seconds, and starting with Peter.
I like the Fletcher-Maynard Academy model, where parents spend a lot of time with the schools, where parents are invited to the school library, invited to classrooms. I saw a very similar model at Ola. That sort of parent engagement, I think, leads to better community, better outcomes for students. That is a choice of individual schools, whether it's a person, that I don't know whether that should be a district-level policy, but personally, I am a very big fan of schools that bring parents deeply and community deeply into classrooms. I also think that that engagement can start much earlier than when kids hit school. I think that if the school district were to have a person follow each family, maybe from the time that kids turn 18 months old, help them through the lottery process, that could help a lot of parents.
Thank you, Peter. Alechi?
Again, family engagement is very important. Again, when I grew up, I remember my mom worked four jobs, but she always made time to see my teachers and attend my parent-teacher meetings. So one thing we have to do is really make families feel welcomed, and we really have to understand the diversity that exists within our school system. Not every parent speaks English, not every parent can read or write or help their children with their homework. So we have to understand this, we have to make every family feel welcome, and we have to speak to them in their language, because some parents will speak fluent Spanish, but can't speak fluent English. And this is again why world language immersion programs are so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Alechi. Manika? There is one mic for each table, so you should be kicking one down there.
Thanks, thanks for letting us know that. I think what's really important for family engagement is to recognize that there is diversity within our school district, and what works for one family will not work for everyone. Sometimes there's this pressure to have potlucks or do these multiple things to bring people to our schools. That may not work for every culture. Maybe there's this desire to go to people's homes, and I know that Robin Harris has a program at the Fletcher where she is doing that, and it's really effective. However, there may be some families that may not want that and feel like it's invasive. So I think what's really important when it comes to family engagement is there is no one right model, but we have to be willing to open ourselves up, to meet the needs of whatever cohort that comes into our schools, and build community engagement models around the people that we have responsibility to, and the children that we're responsible for teaching.
Thank you, Manika. Fran?
Hi, thanks. We know that parent engagement is critical in student success, so it is a very critical factor we really pay attention to. It's also one of the reasons why I am so keen on us expanding, accelerating early childhood education, because it's an opportunity to build the habit of parent engagement. You have to bring your little one to school, you engage with your teacher, you pick them up at the end of the day, and so you just, you get accustomed to having that relationship with your teacher. And for families that are diverse, come from different cultures, have language issues, this is really a great way. The other thing, I think there is a teacher, family, principal, teacher, family collaboration. Again, what is the expectation in the school? If a parent isn't coming, what kind of outreach are we doing? Also, a lot of families do not like electronic communications, and I think, as Manika alluded to, we really have to diversify two, different ways that we can really reach out to our families, because I think the most critical factor at the end of the day is making sure the families are engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. David?
This is something I focused on as part of, as a parent representative on the school council at my children's school at Grammont Parks, and I will say that we start knowing that all families want the best for their children. But as has been referenced by many people, and Mr. Giddo was mentioning, that we have great diversity in the district, and that does have an impact on this. We need as many approaches as we can, in concert with the incredible human service programs in the community. We need interpreter services. But at the base, we need cultural competency for our teachers, for our administrators, for fellow families. Everybody is trying to support their child. In some cases, they're coming to us from a culture that says, the way you support the schools is you don't cross that threshold. This is up to the professionals. If our schools are structured in a way that the kids will be served best with a different kind of family engagement, we need to be aware and in a culturally competent way, work together with the community.
Thank you. Patty?
So, as everyone says, I can say ditto, ditto, ditto. But first, stepping back, why does it matter, or does it matter? And it's absolutely true, it does matter, because it affects student achievement, which is what we're all about. So the schematic I always think about is a book called Beyond the Bake Sale. They have a really great user-friendly, like all this stuff the state does, honestly, I glaze over, but Beyond the Bake Sale is a really good schematic for this. And our vision should be for all of our schools to be welcoming partnership schools. So my vision also is that our schools are community centers, and that for parents who need ESL, we're providing it right there, that our schools are open much longer than they are, than they have been in the past. The real key to this is to make sure families truly feel respected and invited in, and that we honor them by saying, what can I learn from you about your child? Because we often, they often come and they think we're the experts, and if they're truly invited in to say, we know you're the expert on that, then they are motivated, engaged, and will continue to feel invited to the school, and then will provide all of us with family engagement, which would then end up helping their students. The other thing is, we have to meet families where they want, so if it requires us to go out to their churches and meet them for family conferences, let's do that.
Thank you, Patty. Emily?
So I can say that personally, as a parent, being a public school parent for 17 years was probably one of the most profound things in terms of my development as an adult and in terms of our family development. So I think the relationship between schools and families is really huge. We're not just educating kids, we're really educating entire families. I would go even one more step further than the model, not just welcoming schools, not just partnership schools, but empowering schools. How can public schools empower families to be part of the public realm and to engage in the public discourse? Just like we want to empower our kids, I would like us to think about how do we help parents become more and more empowered as they go through the public school system, more and more part of the civil public sphere? Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jake?
Just 45 seconds on this? Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, so I think one of the things we have to do is we have to accept the challenge that we face as a district that uses controlled choice to decide where our kids go to school. We have a very difficult situation, where some of our families might live on one side of town, but go to school at another side of town. And that makes family engagement a very difficult issue to tackle, but it's incredibly critical for success. Even if we're pitching a perfect game in our schools, if we're not having that home-to-school connection, we're failing our students. We need to make sure that learning's happening everywhere for them. I also want to add on to what David mentioned about, all the school councils have been tackling this issue as a community, both in their school council themselves and as, at large, at the district, and I want to support that work if I was to be elected on school committee.
Thank you, Jake. Lawrence?
I would just ask us to all, just for a second, just take a look around, like, who is sitting here in this meeting for the Cambridge School Committee? Right? Addressing the legacy of racism and white supremacy within the schools is at the forefront of this issue, and I don't think we can address the issues of family involvement without addressing the issues of white privilege, and I think that needs to be at the forefront of our work of the Cambridge School Committee. We have many families in Cambridge who do not feel comfortable sending their kids to school in Cambridge because of the lack of diversity within teaching staff. We do not have enough intentionality within our district to be able to specifically address these issues, and I do believe that once we are at the forefront, naming the issue of white supremacy and racism as an issue to be addressed, then we can find ways to get additional families more involved and playing a more important role in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Uh, for the next question, we will start with, uh, Alechi, and we will move down the table rather than flipping. So we're, we're going right to left or left to right, depending which way you're looking. As the federal government explores recruiting student resource officers to assist ICE, the Federal Department Bureau of Immigration, Customs, and Exize, uh, which unfortunately is being used, used now to ice students and, uh, adults out of the system, please elaborate on your policies to defend and advance the interest of immigrant students and their families.
One reason why I'm running for Cambridge School Committee, one reason why I love the city of Cambridge, is because Cambridge loves children. I've seen Cambridge fight for students, to fight students here whose countries kicked them out and didn't want them. I was upset when I heard this administration get rid of the DACA Act. This country was built, built off of immigrants. You look at the Puritans, you look at the Puritans, you look at the Jews, Ellis Island, the Chinese, the Japanese. The beauty of this country is that you come in, you migrate, you become a citizen, and then you contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter? We're going this way.
So, I would put this into one of the issues that should be tackled, but not directly by the school committee, but by empowering the community within the schools to tackle it. The school committee is a small body. Helping our students develop how to affect organizational change, how to effectively influence politics, how to actually influence politics outside of Cambridge is something I think we can and should do, and I think that that can actually give a very significant multiplier effect and keep the Cambridge School Committee focused on, I, I think it can address the issue more effectively in the school committee itself, as well as keep the school committee focused on developing our students.
Lawrence?
I would say, as a member of the Police Review and Advisory Board for the past six years, this has not been a specific issue that we have in Cambridge with police officers potentially coming into our schools, working with ICE, and rounding up our students, uh, and taking them away. If this is, in fact, does become an issue, then I do think it is something that should be at the forefront of the school committee for addressing and making sure that we're collaborating, working closely with the police departments to ensure that the values that we have as a school district are being, playing out in our schools, and that anyone who comes from the federal government to stake students away is quite frankly not welcome. I'm happy to lay my own body down to assure that all of our students feel safe and protected, and that this is not a specific issue for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake?
Thank you. Uh, I think one thing we could do is make sure that we're educating, informing both students and parents and families about what resources are available if they need it, and who they might need to go to if they're facing any issues about this. Uh, I also think we might even take the next step and help inform teachers and other people at the school about how they can potentially speak to their students about this. Uh, and the last thing I'd like to say is that we should work with collaborating with the city council around this issue, because I know that they feel passionately about making a stand against this, and thank you.
Emily?
Thanks. This is, this is something actually that the school committee has done a lot, um, in the last, uh, year on the, um, immigration issues, and we've been talking a lot, we've had motions and sanctuary city motions. The superintendent has been telling us all the things that they've been doing in the schools, information they're trying to get out, things that the teachers are doing. We are working now with the city council and the legal department to clarify exactly what the school system does and does not have to do if we're asked for records, if we're asked, if somebody shows up at the, um, school department door. So I feel like this is something that we've been very, very conscious of, because you can't miss it. You pick up the paper every day and that issue is there. But we are trying to put a, a very clear legal policy in that will, will tell everybody exactly what's possible, but in the meantime, I feel like the superintendent has been very, very proactive, working with the staff around the immigration issues, both the anxiety and also around the legal issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Patty?
Um, yes. Yes, as, uh, has been said by Emily, we have a very strong policy, which we shall be proud of, as a city and a school district, to ensure every student feels safe, every family. The school committee with the administration work jointly on issuing a very strong directory to, a directive to ensure all staff knows how to handle anything that happens at the school level, and that they are not allowed, and they don't have to let anyone in, that that is referred automatically to upper levels, so that we can help keep every single student and family safe, um, and we'll keep doing that.
Thank you, Patty. David?
Our, our schools are sanctuaries. No family should fear being separated during the school day, uh, because of immigration enforcement, which is happening in this country, and it's happening, uh, in this state. Uh, I'm really proud that Cambridge is out front on this, and I think that the school committee must ensure that we're working with the, uh, city council, as was, as has been mentioned, with the Cambridge Police Department, to ensure that our families can feel secure, uh, being a part of our school communities, and that we are supporting in every way we're, we're able to.
Fran?
Hi, I have just a very timely, um, question. Um, a couple of things that we have done, we are a sanctuary city, have been since nineteen eighty-five, so we are accustomed to being a very welcoming city. I would also like to do a shout-out to our really terrific police department, in particular the safety net, which really protects our students and our youth, including the safety officers at each of our schools. These are highly-trained people who really know how to protect our students and work with our faculties and administration in every single building. I would also like to add that in the high school, we have a group called UAspire, which counsels even non-documented students on a pathway to college if that's what they would like to do. So that is really critical, and we also think of us as a region. We are not, we're not alone, we've got a moat of safety and security between our partnering cities, in particular Somerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Monika?
So I'm very proud to say that the work that, um, Patty talked about, um, school committee member Nolan talked about, I led that motion and worked with our legal team to figure out what's the right language that we put in to ensure that any federal office, officer that comes on our campus, any one of them would be referred to the superintendent. That language is getting worked out with our legal team, but until that motion is moved forward, this, the superintendent has already sent out memos across the school districts, so I want people to know that this work is being done, and that it is very clear to principals or teachers that if anyone comes on our campus, that they will not comply with them, and they will be referred to our legal team or their superintendent and no one else.
Thank you, Monika. We're going to move on to a couple of, uh, science-related questions, um, and, uh, we're going to drop the, uh, time limit to thirty seconds. Don't panic, uh, candidates. If you remember science classes, uh, in high school, the tests were always, uh, multiple choice or short answer, even if the questions were awfully long, as this next one appears to be. Uh, forty countries have now banned genetically-modified organisms, or GMOs, and another sixty-four, another sixty-four countries require GMOs to be labeled. The US does not require either, and our nation is by many metrics among the sickest in the world. Much science is telling us that these GMOs and their, the pesticide, uh, which they are immune to, glyphosate, are a serious threat to our health, especially to our children's health. If you are elected or re-elected, would you be willing to look at the science and consider working with the city council to make our schools and their campuses GMO and glyph- glyphosate aware, if not totally free zones? And we start with Peter.
Huh. Well, I don't think I have a clear answer to that. I would certainly look at the science. Uh, I would, what, one issue that I would want to tackle potentially as a school system, necessarily a school committee, is healthier food within the lunch program. I think that's important. Specifically GMO, I think I would defer to other school committee members or the administration or the city council. Other previous special mention that I'm an immigrant, I'm very proud that Cambridge is a sanctuary city. I just want to be very clear that I'm not saying we shouldn't do things, I am just saying, I was just trying to comment on that the motions from the superintendent, that is how they can get done much more quickly.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Um, the other, uh, potential and current school committee members who have been deferred to, please answer. Lawrence?
I want to say it was two thousand and ten when I was listening to NPR and I heard a report given by Environmental Working Group that was talking about the toxicity of many of the household materials that we use on a regular basis. My wife and I went through our medicine cabinet, we went through all of our cleaning materials, and we changed our lifestyle to make sure that we're only using materials that were safe for us and for our family. So I do support the work that Environmental Working Group does, and I do believe that the Cambridge School Committee should additionally support that work in making sure that all of our kids are safe when they enter the schools from toxins and pesticides and other chemicals that are harmful. Thank you.
Time. Jake?
Wasn't expecting this one. Uh, I'm not a scientist, but I believe very much in their work. Uh, I believe in trusting our experts on these issues, and so what I would do is, I would field as many experts on this issue, and even if it means holding a roundtable about it, if it's something that the community wants, that's something I would like to see. Uh, but I would look towards the experts and then make my decision after listening to what they have to say.
Emily?
So I think it's a perfect example of something we could do with our high school students, because we have so many high school students who are interested in all the various, both the legal and the ethical and the scientific issues involved in something like GMOs. And I would like to set up a competition between maybe five or six kids, five or six teams of kids, ask them to do the research, ask them to come forward with the recommendations, and then we could, um, take a look and first, we get feedback on our science programs, et cetera, and we'd also hear what our students have to say. That would be my starting point with that.
Patty?
Yeah, I didn't expect this. So I think Roundup should be banned, and I think Neonix should be banned. I'm not sure about all GMOs, so this question is a little bit confusing to me. Basically, my response is, I'm not sure I want to follow all the experts here, because I would follow Europe. I think Europe has a much, much, much stronger position, and has for years, where their first line is to say, "We won't do it unless we can prove it safe," whereas we say, "Do it until it's proved unsafe." So I would follow up, uh, in general, and on these kinds of questions, I follow up Europe's lead on this.
Thank you, Patty. Yes, David?
Um, I believe in science, we should be guided by science. Um, I agree with Mr. Kimbrough that we should be thinking holistically about the health of the school environment, uh, and making sure that that's a constant concern, uh, even as we deal with other things. It's just a baseline. Uh, I agree with Mr. Metros, healthy lunch is important, and appealing lunches, and frankly, enough time, uh, to actually eat those lunches. Uh, that part of my campaign is dedicated to my daughter.
Fran?
This is on? This on? Yes, okay. Um, you know, it's interesting, the whole thing around GMOs is also a social justice issue, because those that are, well, they're fortunate enough can really be very scrutinous about the food that we purchase, and make sure that we can buy organic foods, non-GMO foods. In fact, I just had this conversation with my daughter, she's trying to ban GMOs from our house. But, uh, but people who, not everyone in our community has the luxury of being that scrutinous and scrupulous about their food shopping, so I will look at our food, our cafeteria food, the food that we supply, and I know that we actually have a very excellent food service, and we should just work very hard to make sure that we provide the highest quality food we can to our students. That's it. Thanks.
Monika?
I'm definitely in support in making sure that anything that goes into our kids' body, um, our children's body, that, that is going to be healthy, as well as in their brains as well, so on both sides. I also want to say, I, I agree with Fran. You know, we live in Cambridge, it's kind of a bubble, let's be really clear about it. You know, we live in this, this global world where population is growing, and the reality is, is that in some cases, we don't have enough resources to be able to feed people. When you think about what's happening with climate change, drought, so I just think sometimes we need to take a step back, and what makes sense for us, because we live in this very privileged place called Cambridge, it always needs to be in conversation with other individuals, with other people in our community, outside of our community, that may not have the luxury to make those types of decisions. So I think that that's the conversation that we need to bring to this body when we're making decisions around how we leverage resources in our school district.
Thank you, Monika. Alechi?
I'm not a scientist, but I am an analyst. So forty countries have banned GMOs, and sixty-four require them to be labeled. So why did the forty, why did the country that banned the forty not ban all sixty-four? So what I want to do is conduct a study. I want to know exactly how people are reacting to GMOs. Are some of the people that are having that negative reactions, is there a common GMO? Are there positive reactions that could be had of a GMO? And I would work with the city council to conduct a study and definitely label them because of nutrition, and every human being has a right to know what they're putting in their body. Thank you.
Thank you, Alechi. I want to get in two more questions, so the next one is going to be a yes or no question. No elaboration.
It's something at eight forty-five.
It's eight forty. No, this is a yes or no. Uh, according to a recent news report, Cambridge is number one in Massachusetts in expenditures of students, uh, per student, uh, cost of approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars per year. The second highest is Weston, which, believe it or not, uh, is probably even wealthier per capita than Cambridge, at twenty-two thousand. Are we getting our money's worth? Yes or no, starting with Lawrence?
I have to leave.
Okay. You can answer the question, yes or no?
I didn't hear the question.
Okay.
I just felt like we should start getting them on time.
Okay. Um, Jake?
I don't know if that's a question that could be answered, it's such a complex one, but I would say no.
Emily?
I think we're getting a lot for our money. We just need to...
Yes or no?
Um, no, I, I, I just don't, I, I can't answer a question like that, I'm sorry.
Patty?
Nope.
Until there's no room to improve? No.
No. Yes for some, no for others.
Alechi?
No.
And Peter?
No.
Okay. And the last question, uh, and we'll hold this also to thirty seconds, um, with apologies, but we want to end before we have to leave. Uh, "Please elaborate on policies, programs, and projects to include, to improve civics education, to ensure that all, uh, Cambridge graduates understand how our government works at all levels. This is so that they understand how to contribute to the functioning of our democracy, and to know how to navigate government to advance their own interests as well." Starting with Jake.
How many seconds?
Thirty to forty-five, but try to talk fast. Okay. Um, "Please elaborate on policies, programs, and projects to improve civics education, to ensure that all graduates understand how our government works at all levels. This is so they understand how to contribute to the functioning of our democracy, and to know how to navigate government to advance their own interests as well."
Okay, thirty seconds, let's go. Uh, so I think about history and social studies and making sure that we find the time in the classrooms to do it there. I think about programs such as the Stars programs, which give kids real experience on making a difference in their community. And then I think we could actually be discussing about how school committee members could be working with students to then inform them more about our work and have them be part of our subcommittees, so that they can out, also help us shape policy in our district.
Emily?
It's obviously a very important part of the curriculum, it should be woven in, and I think it is woven in in various ways. I'd like to see us map out much more about what our civic goals, our goals are around civics education, and, um, to look at where that is covered in the, uh, committee, uh, in the curriculum. I'd like to see our kids getting out and being assigned to go to city council meetings, going to school committee, I think, really informing them about the local, um, uh, government that they have, starting there is probably the most important thing that they understand, because that's what they are going to have the most, uh, place to affect, so I would start locally.
Patty?
It's on? Uh, it's already happening in some of our classrooms, and I fully support it. I mean, we get sometimes a proposal from a third grade to do something like eliminate recess, or my favorite was like eliminate math, like, really? Uh, no math in third grade? So they already are being taught that, and I love it. And I think what's important is it's in the younger grades, it continues in the middle school. It's the one place I might actually want the state to say, "We should have it at the high school level also," because there's no requirement for civics. My model for a terrific, amazing program is Generation Citizen. If you don't know it, look it up, it's a, it's a really cool thing that, that is in a lot of districts around the state and not ours.
David?
Uh, well, this is critical. I mean, we're supporting and developing our youngest citizens, and I mean that regardless of immigration status.[1729.03] of immigration status. There are some great examples of things that we are doing well already, and we should, as with other programs, evaluate, support the ones that are doing well, meet those gaps. Facing History in Ourselves has a long history in this district, I've worked with it myself, and we may, we can take advantage of that, for example. Currently, I am coordinating a national program for undergraduates focused on state-level government, engaging in state-level government. We're in 16 states right now, and is a model, and I've become aware of many more models that we can incorporate into what we're doing in a thoughtful way.
Fran?
I'm an advocate of civics. I brought voter registration into the high school for two years. I've been a judge with Generation Citizen, which is, which is a competition on different types of programs, civics programs between high schools that's run at the State House. The Stars program is great, I've spoken to at that program, and I think we need to have a mandatory civics class in high school and requirement before graduation.
Monika?
I think the best way, particularly as a school committee member, to show and execute, you know, good civic engagement is by leading, leading by example, and that is what I've done in my first term. We have a system, a school committee system, where the way we work is through our subcommittee system. And in order to get anything done in the school committee, you have to gather people before you go to a main meeting. And I'm very proud to say that every subcommittee that I was responsible for met multiple times with people from the community in order to move things forward. The best way we can show our students, in the era of 45, the guy that is now running our country, what good governance looked like is by leading from, by leading by example at the local level. And I'm very proud to say that I've done that, and I want you to vote me number one this fall.
Alechi?
We spoke earlier about equal pay, equal rights, early education, how to protect our immigrant population from ICE, and what affects all this policy. Civics isn't really written into the Cambridge curriculum, but we have to make sure that we do put some sort of civics course for our high school students, because the voting age is 18, and what's going to affect their life, whether they vote or not, and who they vote for. So we have to make sure that they understand the significance of voter participation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Peter?
I would put in a few pieces. First of all, understanding opposing points of view. I would partner with a school in a red state where students have to talk, understand, and we evaluate them on their ability to do that. Second of all, the difference between the theory of democracy and our justice system and the reality, how money fits into this, how these systems work at practice. The third one is understanding stakeholders and how you influence stakeholders, how you build consensus, how actual politics works. I would move away from theory to practice and to a world that's complicated with multiple opposing points of view.
Several of you had asked earlier today if we would have closing statements. I think we can squeeze in some very quick closing statements, 10 seconds each, something more than vote for me number one. Anybody want to close, starting, starting Alechi going right to left?
I deeply care about education, I understand the value of education. I've walked, I've walked the hallways, I've sat in the classrooms, and I ask for your number one vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Let's assume that last statement comes from everybody.
Learning science, empowerment, and fixing organizational issues, those are course by platform, I've done those in many places, so I think with that.
I've deserved, I've devoted the past five years plus of my life towards education, I feel passionately about it. I've been in the classrooms in Cambridge, and I've been involved in numerous ways outside of the classroom as well, which is experience that I think is important to have.
Yeah, I would say whoever you vote for number one, vote for somebody who's going to push. That's the way you get things done in this world. Yes, you have to push with other people, you have to push responsibly, but an object at rest will stay at rest unless it is pushed. So if we want a system that moves forward, we need to have people who are going to push it. We've got a system that has 1,200 employees, it's an enormous bureaucracy, it has, that has to have pressure to be put on it. So I would say, look for somebody who pushes. I'm a person who likes to push. I'd rather try to do eight things and accomplish five of them than try to do two things and accomplish two of them.
10 seconds each for the rest of you.
If there's anything we've learned from the last year, it's that democracy needs us to show up and vote. I hope you vote number one for me, but honestly, I hope you vote. And I also hope you vote number two, three, four, and five, because in a recount a few years ago, I only got elected by fours and fives and sixes on the ballots. It was not the ones and twos, I didn't have enough of those. Really vote and vote for many people, because you never know in a close race, it truly matters.
David?
Thank you to everyone here on this stage and those, and those who couldn't make it here to this forum. My public education shaped me as a person, an educator, a citizen. I want the same thing for my kids, for all the children of Cambridge. Excellent education grounded in a diverse, loving community of families, teachers, administrators, and community members who are not afraid to challenge each other, to grow and to improve. I know the classroom, I know our community, I know how to build consensus and get things done. Please reach out to me anytime.
Fran?
I'm a parent, I'm an educator, I've been educational advocate, I'm OG certified, I've tutored, I've taught ESL, I've taught after-school, and four years served as the co-chair of the Pan Advisory Council of Children with Special Needs. I served on the school committee with bringing my expertise and experience and leadership skills to best practices, and with the support of my colleagues, I was able to get a lot done. I'm effective, I'm a consensus builder, and I really believe in the transformative power of education. I look forward to receiving your number one vote Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.
And Monika, if you wanted to say anything else?
I'm definitely about pushing, but I'm about pushing with a purpose and being strategic and leveraging people's time and energy in order to achieve a goal. And I ask that you would send me back to serve, because one thing that I have demonstrated in my first term is that I understand how to partner with people and how to leverage a system in order to get things done. And that has been demonstrated in the goals that I've achieved. Many people talked about the district-wide planning effort. I led that effort through the ad hoc committee that I chaired, through the onboarding of the superintendent. Our systems matter, and you have to elect people that understand those systems, know